Thank you. Good afternoon, school board members. Dr. Garza. We're here this afternoon to provide information regarding recommendations made to our grading and reporting regulations. If you'll remember, way back in December of 2014, our superintendent charged us to examine and review current practice and make recommendations that support our strategic plan, desired outcome, that grading will be an accurate reflection of learning, and that we have greater consistency across our division. Last July, almost a year ago, we provided you with an update of the work from last school year with several changes to our regulation that went into effect this current school year. Today, we're providing you with the results of the work that has happened over this current school year and our next steps. We are very appreciative of the work and input from all of our stakeholders over these last 18 months. I'm sorry that Ben Press could not be here this afternoon, as we've collaborated with him and the superintendent's Student Advisory Council throughout the year. And in fact, as you'll see this afternoon, our recommendations are very similar to those that the students from the SAC brought forth just a few weeks ago at a school board meeting. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Noelle Clementco here to my left for her leadership and facilitation of the process. Also, Stephanie Gerard joins us in the back. She helped a lot with our teacher focus groups and our committee meetings. Noelle serves as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and she's going to lead us through the presentation today. Also joining us, two members of the work group, Martin Grimm, Principal at Hayfield Secondary School, and Alex Case, Principal of West Potomac High School. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I'm really very, very excited to be here after 18 months of work, working with multiple stakeholders, and I'm excited to bring you up to date on where we are with this work. This is actually from IGNITE. We started this work 18 months ago. It was kind of made official when it was included in IGNITE last year. And the two words, I think, that stick out to me when looking at our action, they're at the bottom, is that we were really seeking more consistency among our schools, and we also wanted to make sure that our practices were ensuring that our grades reflected learning. Okay? So those were the two kinds of things that we kept in mind throughout this work. As Dr. Lockard mentioned, we were given some topics for consideration as we move forward with this work. You'll notice at the bottom, two are grayed out. Those are two things that we actually have in place this year, and we have been implementing. And the top four bullets are the ones that we are going to look at today. They're around separation of work habits and achievement, around the maximum that grades can carry, retakes, and of course, you can't talk about grading without talking about the zero. As Dr. Lockard also mentioned, we have really spent time, we've taken time to get stakeholder input and to educate around this issue through these months. And if you take a look, the different groups that we have focused on, the principals, were part of a steering committee that met monthly throughout this process to kind of guide the work and hear from what the focus group was doing and guide next steps. They also dedicated time at ACPM meetings and their retreats to have in-depth discussions. And they actually, many of them started committees at their schools to make sure that this conversation was happening. We actually saw a big uptick in more consistent grading policies within schools this year as a result of this work. And then teachers, as was mentioned, our focus group, it was really such a treat and a delight to work with two teachers from each middle and high school. We came together monthly to share current practices, to read articles, and to really think about what makes sense as we consider changing division-level regulations. We also did a survey last spring, and we had about 40% return on that, which was excellent, and has been really a guiding force in this work. Teacher associations have been included in this work throughout. From the very beginning, once this was started, they were included in the focus group as well as the steering committee, and have been really partners in this work. And the last thing, which may seem not like a big thing, is ongoing communication, but Dr. Lockard has been sending emails to all the teachers, middle and high school teachers in the division, kind of giving them an update, as well as letting them know that this work is still in progress. You know, a lot of times, things kind of bubble up, and then people go, "What happened to that? Are we still working on that?" So these emails really helped people understand that we did have sustained attention and definite intention of moving forward with new policies. The Student Advisory Council, I met with them four times. They were amazing. They have insights to grading that you would, that cannot be communicated by anyone else but students, right? And they helped me co-craft a survey that was given to students, and then I know that you all received that report. And finally, parents. Our parent outreach was really just an online outreach, providing them information about the change through our publications that we have, as well as providing an opportunity for them to do written input, which we did through the user voice, like we did with the budget. So we have been engaging all of these, and the input has kind of been synthesized into our recommendations. Before we get into what changes that we are anticipating for the fall, I think it's important to understand some of the challenges that provide a context of how we ended, where we ended. And some of the challenges that we had to kind of face and make accommodations for was, one, is we started this work seeking consistency. And consistency, some people think means everybody doing the same exact thing. Well, we're a very large division, so we quickly realized that we needed to figure out what is the correct level of consistency for a division our size. And within that, we recognized that some schools had implemented many, many of the research-based best practices we were talking about already, and some hadn't started that journey yet. So we had a wide range. So bringing everybody to the exact same place at the same moment in time was probably not possible, so we had to find that right level of consistency. In addition, we sort of had to balance what you might, in your heart of hearts, want to happen, but the reality and the practicality of implementation, and how that might impact teacher workload, and how that might play out in today's current system. So there's always the theoretical versus the practical that we had to balance. And then finally, we're strong believers in teachers and teacher professionalism, and we wanted to make sure that we reserved some level of team autonomy, teacher autonomy, in their grading design. So with that said, those were our challenges. We're going to dig into each of the four areas and show you some of the wording that we have, that we've come to consensus on. The first area, separation of work habits and achievement, actually take on a lot of different types of policy questions. And that's because what we're trying to do is we're trying to tease out those things that might go in the grade book, that might skew a grade up or down, but they have very little to do with a student's proficiency or achievement in the subject area. So you're trying to tease out some of those grades that come into play, that may be artificially raising or lowering a student's grade. And here are some of the areas we're going to look at. So the first one, we wanted to put some general statements into our handbook that would kind of set the tone, that the first thing we need to ensure is that the work that we are giving students is aligned to our program of studies, or designated curriculum in some cases, so that those grades represent the learning of the curriculum that is intended to be taught. And the second bullet up there is very important, and it was very true in the parent comments as well, is that parents do want to know about their students' work habits. Though they are very, obviously, interested in grades, we do not want to underplay that work habits are an important part of a student being successful in school and beyond. So there's also going to be the statement, the second statement up there, that there's an expectation that there's communication with parents. This is one of the larger changes, and will have impact on many teachers in our system that don't perhaps currently practice this, and that's around late work. So our policy has an expectation that late work will be accepted, so that a student's learning can be assessed and that student can receive feedback. We are leaving some autonomy here for teams to decide what the parameters would be, what any kind of grade penalty might be for that late work, but that we really, that there is an expectation that late work will be accepted. And again, we'll want to make sure that if there are patterns of late work, that parents are up to date on that information. Homework is also bundled. If you're a purist around separation of work habits and achievement, then homework should probably not count at all if it's just for practice. But I think in our system, we still have a lot of teachers who want it to have a little bit of a presence in the grade. So 10% has sort of been what people always felt was the policy, and we found out that about 83% of our teachers last year in the survey were already counting homework 10% or less. So we decided to take what was currently happening and put that into regulation. For class participation, this is one that we worked on because we want to ensure that if grades are going in the grade book, they are not just about quantity of responses, but quality. And I know that this will be of special interest to some of our fine and performing arts, some of our world language teachers. These are places where those kinds of practices, it's actually part of their curriculum, that they want to ensure that they have a way to measure. So I was just actually working with the specialists in those areas today to say, you know, we need to be ready to help and support teachers in moving forward. But the idea here is that class participation is welcome to be part of the grade, as long as it's aligned with learning. And the final, I think, I believe this is the final area in this separation of work habits and achievement, which is extra credit. We still left some room for extra credit to happen at a teacher's discretion, as long as that extra credit really is measuring student work and achievement. We are eliminating the extra credit that comes, I was teasing the math team this morning, pies for pie day should not be extra credit in your math grade. Even though they're delicious, and we would encourage them, it's probably not a grade. So those kinds of things that we do see from occasion, just putting it into regulation, that those are not the kind of extra credits we would want to see. So those were all of the different categories that fall into that one heading of separation of work habits and achievement. The rest of these are a little bit more straightforward. The second area that we looked at as a group was how much a grade can count in the grade book, in a quarter grade. There's a couple of different ways to approach it, but our final decision was to look at this in the context of no one grade in a quarter should count more than a certain percentage. Now, you can see in this one, we have collaborative teams are encouraged to set their grading design so that no one grade in a quarter would be more than 30%. So this is not one of those that have shall or will, but we are trying to move teachers in that practice. The concern being that sometimes teachers set up their grading design, and there's very good intentions, and then we have snow days, we have things that happen, and we didn't want to put anybody at a disadvantage. But this is one we'll want to continue to monitor, because we don't want one assessment or one assignment to have such impact on a student's grade that, again, it doesn't truly represent their learning. The next area under consideration was retakes. And I think it's important just to remember why we are undertaking this question. And it is not about improving students' grades. It is about improving students' learning and giving them opportunities, additional opportunities, when necessary, to demonstrate their proficiency. So we have an unusual approach, in my mind. This is the first approach like this I've seen, and I've looked at a lot of different grading designs across the country. We have sort of what we would call a hybrid approach, okay? So I'll try and explain this, and then, of course, during questions, I can go further. Our expectation is that any student on a major assessment who scores below an 80 would have an opportunity for at least one retake after they have done some sort of intervention or corrective action. So if you score below an 80, you should be given that opportunity at least one, so you don't have to have more than one, but at least one. And you would also have to do some intervention, but you would get that opportunity to demonstrate that proficiency. If that's the case, and that's what's happening in your classroom, once you take that second chance opportunity, then the highest grade would go in the grade book. Okay? Except for, because we have capped at an 80, the highest grade that can go in the grade book is an 80, if that makes sense. So what happens is when you put kind of a level in, and you say, "If you get below an 80, you can retake," the highest grade that can go in the grade book is an 80, because it would not be fair to students who scored above an 80. If a student got a second chance and scored 100, and all of a sudden, that just creates an unfair situation. Now, that doesn't make everyone really comfortable, because we want grades to represent learning, right? So, but it's one of those things, it's that tension between theory and practice and looking at the system that we currently live in. So because of that, and because we know from our research that many, many teachers are already giving retakes, we left it open for teams to decide that they want to give everyone a retake, or that opportunity to do the corrective action and take a retake. And if they do that, then obviously, the real grade can go in the grade book, above an 80. So that's why I call it a hybrid. We sort of have a floor that, at the very least, teachers must implement that 80% rule. But teams, teachers are welcome to go beyond that and offer it to more students.
May I say on this, Noelle, a lot of these provisions that we're talking about around grading practices are to keep our struggling learners in the game, if you will. Because in absence of these practices, you can see very quickly, students that make one failing grade, kind of the game is over. I mean, what's their motivation for continuing to put in effort and try to, you know, now, are high-achieving students, largely it's not going to affect them a whole lot? Because, you know, if they're making 98s and, you know, making high grades on everything, largely a lot of these things are not going to affect them. So I think that's kind of a basic premise behind a lot of these things that are talked about today, and I think this is a good example. So if I have a handful of students that did not do well, or did poorly on an assessment, they have the opportunity to redo it, and the 80 is the highest. But if for some reason, a teacher feels like, you know, "I really didn't like how anyone in the class scored on this test, I want to do a retake for everybody," that gives them the flexibility of doing that too, and recording whatever grade they make, or the highest grade in the grade book.
And the way that we have this policy worded and designed, it still leaves a lot of flexibility for the collaborative team. The description of major assessments, like which assessments are they going to allow this to happen? The opportunities for students above 80, they're making that decision. If they want to offer more than one opportunity, that also could be done. The timeline, when it's going to happen. I think two of the things that are important to recognize is that when we talk about retakes, they can take different forms. It could be test corrections, it could be revision. It's not always going to be another test. That's going to be up to the team. And then the corrective action or intervention would also be up to the team to decide. So our fourth area, which is typically the area that causes a lot of angst, zeros, and it did for the focus group early on, and we learned that we needed to set it aside. We had to set it aside in order to talk about late work and to talk about retakes. Like, we need to get these supportive practices in place, and then we can talk about zeros. And when we started to have that conversation, you know, our task was to consider either eliminating or limiting the zero. So there was a little bit of flexibility in that language. And so the outcome that you'll see up here is that we want students to have multiple opportunities to get work completed, but at the end of the quarter, if the student still has not turned in work, the teacher does have the option to put the zero into the grade book. And you'll see that we're making the recommendation that if a student turns in reasonable work, that a grade, no grade lower than 50 go in the grade book. So that's a difference between no work and reasonable work. And the last bullet on that slide kind of pertains to that tension I was talking about with what's currently happening and the level of consistency. We have at least eight high schools, self-reported, already having a zero policy in place, and therefore, we did not want to take them backwards from their current policies. You may be asking yourself, "Why did we have all these policies all over the place if we were one division?" Well, our current grading and reporting handbooks have had this statement in them for several years. It was our way of letting schools kind of figure out what worked for them and to implement some of these research-based best practices without having the division say, "This is what you must do," which was great until you get to a place where you have the haves and the have-nots, which is where we found ourselves. And so our work over these last 18 months was to pull people closer together. And since we feel we have done a good job, still leaving flexibility in certain places, we plan on removing this from the handbook. So our next steps on this is to update the grading and reporting handbooks, and that and the other piece to that will be providing supporting documents to teachers and administrators to help them implement these practices, because we realize that it will take, it will take some conversations at the team level to come up with some new policies in many cases. So we want to make sure that we give them questions and suggestions on how to move forward. We also want to provide administrators some information as they're looking at syllabus, what should they be looking for, to make sure that teachers are putting these things in place, and communicating with families so they'll understand what's happening. In addition, we're updating the middle and high school comments to be more of a 2016 feel, as well as to represent some of the work habits that we want to be able to communicate to parents about. And our intent is implementation in the fall of 2016. So this was communicated, I think, as you are aware, with teachers last week through one of those comment emails sent out from Dr. Lockard.
If I could make a couple of more comments, a couple of additional comments before we go to board members. You know, I've been doing this for almost 30 years, and I will tell you, some of the hardest work that I feel like I've been a part of has been changing practices around Hard everywhere I've ever been, because people have such strong personal opinions and feelings about grading. And these are two of the finest high school principals you'll find anywhere in the country, right down here at the end. I think they would tell you, I think, I find it hardest for our high school teachers to wrap their heads around, you know, these kinds of notions. So I think it's hardest for our high schools and our high school principals, you know, our elementaries with our standardized, you know, our standards-based grading, it's not an issue. Middle school principals took this on, I don't know how many years ago, five or six years ago, and they've been working on this for some time, and so they've kind of turned the corner with their teachers. I think, with the exception of a handful or so, high school principals that have been working on this for a while, I think this is probably the hardest thing to address with high schools. I find that oftentimes, parents also bring a different perspective to this, not all universal either. But it's kind of like that old school, you know, thing, everyone's been to school, so they have an opinion about school. Everyone's experienced grading, and so they have opinions about grading. And it's interesting, because this is the one thing that will often have parents stop me and say, "Well, I don't think it's fair for a student not to get a zero when they don't do any work." Or, "I don't think it's fair that a student gets to retake." That's not real world, that kind of thing. So, and I will tell you, I think what we're talking about today is more real world. You know, we do not-yets all the time in the real world, and even in colleges and universities. You turn in a paper, and they'll say, "Well, you're not quite there yet. I've given you some feedback, keep working on it." That's the way the real world is. And so I think much of what we're talking about is reflective of the real world, and I think, too, would be a better reflection of what we, of learning, is what we've tried to do. I do want to compliment, Noelle, specifically you, I think, have really, you know, led this so masterfully. You know, I think, you know, I don't often like to go so slow on stuff, it kind of drives me crazy. But this was an area that I felt like, and I know Steve agrees with me, that we couldn't do anything but go slower on it, because the last thing you want to do in changing practices like this is for teachers to feel like it's being done to them without having had any input. So honoring the teacher's input, I think, is very important in this process. I know it's not perfect yet, but I believe that we've, you know, come a long way on some very, very important issues. I compliment you all, everyone at the table at the end there who is involved in this. But everyone brings their own kind of, it's interesting, ideas to this, to this conversation. So I just want us to keep in mind, this is also something that not everyone will have full agreement on. We just kind of have to do the right thing and get enough buy-in that we think we can move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. I have Ms. Hines first, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you so much. Boy, this is a lot of work, I'm sure. I just had a couple of questions. The first is, and this is just, maybe you can give your own opinion or your sense of what the group felt, is to why we, why we want to allow retakes over 80 at all? Because basically, we're talking about retakes of a B. Right? And so, and this is coming from an elementary teacher, where I always said, "Hey, B's a good grade, move on," right? But I know it's probably a little different in high school, so I wanted to ask that question. And then also, the question about, there's a lot in here, I feel, has put responsibility on collaborative teams to come up with plans. And so I'm assuming that that means everybody on the team is expected to comply, which I think is important for consistency, at least within the building. But then also, I'm just wondering how people feel about all that work that will now be collaborative teamwork, when they're going to be able to do it for, you know, implementation for the fall? So just curious.
I'd be happy to address the first one, and I could probably address the second one, but you all might want to talk about the teams and how that works. With the, with the retakes, I think the teacher focus group, when they talked about all students having that opportunity, there's two sides to that. But mostly, what they heard is that if students want to keep learning and improving, we don't want to stop that. You know, we want to provide those opportunities. Of course, the other side of it is, is that if they feel like kids are just doing it until, because they have a need to be perfect, and it might be adding to their stress, right? So that is, that is the other side that we did hear, that we did hear from teachers. But in general, I think the overarching belief was they didn't want to say, "An 80 is just good enough," right? They wanted, so keeping people learning was the key there.
Along with that, there's, sometimes the, it can happen that a large majority of students don't maybe do well on something, and so the teacher reflects and says, "Maybe, maybe I need to present that in a different way," or "Go back through this to make sure students understand it," and provide that opportunity to take it again.
On the team piece, certainly throughout all these recommendations, the goal was to have a common floor across all of our secondary schools. And so that's one of the things that we accomplished there. The principals pushed our leaders very hard on getting this information out to teachers at this point in the year, because there's lots of work that collaborative teams are doing in the final days and weeks of school over the summer. Some of them are paid in the summertime to come back. Certainly in a project momentum school, that's one of our most important things. And then in that protected work time in the, in the fall, to make some of these decisions. So we're giving people lots of time to get their heads around it, lots of workdays to collaborate and make sure that's consistently implemented.
And I would say that a majority, all of the higher-functioning CTs already have all this in place. You know, CIS has been helped in that work, because now that, and you all have been at the cocktail parties, you know, and Alex and I both have a child in World History I, and if his grade book looks significantly different for his child than mine, you know, that's an issue, you know? Algebra I and BC Calculus, those grade books can look different. I mean, those are, they're both math, but that's about it, right? But with the, when you're within the same content area, it's really, really important. And that's, that's where, you know, life's not fair, or I'm sorry, excuse me, life's not equal, but it should be fair. And that's where I think the fair piece comes in, because, you know, really, if Alex is giving a retake, and I'm not, then we, there's, there's a fairness issue there, not only for grades. And I would just back up what Dr. Garza said. The way I came into this work, looking at this work, having been at Centerville, Edison, and Hayfield, so, excuse me, three, I talk with my hands a little bit, three very different types of schools. It really is, we're looking at that kid who we don't want to lose. And so I think a lot of the CTs already have that in place, and I think there is a little back and forth, but truthfully, the established ones, they already have it. I will tell you, at Hayfield, our scores have gone up in math the last two years, and I think I directly attribute it to retakes, directly attribute it to retakes.
The one thing I would point out, too, is because there were two teachers from every middle school and high school as part of this process, every month, they actually went back, and they were, they had assignments and things to talk about with their colleagues. So they have done, I think, a really good job of talking about, so they're, some of them are ahead, because they know this is coming, and they're already having some of these conversations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Ms. Perichef. I try to hold my hands. I got a warning from Ms. Corvus Sanders. She asked me whether I was an Italian. With that said, this might have been already answered, but since I didn't hear it, let me ask you about definition of major assessments one more time. What's your definition?
So as it stands right now, the team would actually decide what major assessments are, but we would, we would anticipate, and from talking with the focus group, we're really talking about tests. We're talking about the tests that come out the end of a year. We're talking about the tests that come out the end of a unit. It could be a project or a paper as well, depending on how that was, how that was scored. Some schools may go a little further and do quizzes or something, but it's not going to be every assignment. It's not going to be, oh, that homework assignment, this classwork assignment. There's no way to provide that number of retakes. So we really wanted the ones that were more of that summative in nature.
Okay. Do you think that might just depend upon the extent of impact of certain assignment or test quizzes on the grade, rather than whether it's a test work, you know, how they, how they label it?
Yeah, I think the major would be probably the amount of information and the percentage of the grade that it was, and that would probably lead to them deciding that that was a major assignment. Major assignments can look so different across the different curriculum areas, it was hard to put a label on it.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple other questions that have not been covered. Maybe that wasn't a part of the study. That final exam, you know, some teachers give a final exam, some others don't. Could you tell us whether there should be consistency, or it doesn't matter, just should leave that up to individual teacher or team or schools?
So we did not talk about final exams in this group, and that might be something for further consideration. Right now, the way that we have been talking about final exams is they could be what you would traditionally think of a final exam, or it may be a culminating activity, that courses should have some sort of summative end-of-year activity, but it can look very different across different courses. Right now, in our policy, it can be up to 20% of their overall final grade. But again, some, some teams set up grading design so they don't have a final exam grade count that much.
But do you think it's worth looking into it?
I, I think that there's been so much national and even local conversation around final exams and the impact and the, if final exams really demonstrate long-term learning, that it's definitely worth looking into.
Okay. The next one is, has to do with, since we've been talking about consistency, I am trying to see whether it is worth looking into consistency among teachers and schools. That, I go to these graduations, now I have, I'm two graduations behind Mr. McElbin, but I still have 20 left on my calendar. I go to graduations, and I see all these honor graduates, and some schools do have more than others, and I could, you know, speculate or guess why that is so. But at the same time, do you think, do you think looking into whether there is a consistency among schools on grading, GPAs, whether that's worth looking into? But even among, amongst the teachers teaching same class at a given school? Because I remember those days when my kids were in high school, that, you know, they talk about, "Oh, for this particular subject, you know, such teacher is the best one." And I ask, "Why? Is your grade or is one of the common reasons teaching the same thing?" And I could see where if it is, if they are using the same assessment tools, if it is multiple test, multiple exam, maybe there shouldn't be any inconsistency. But when it comes down to essay writings, you know, subjective, you know, views might play into a grading. So whether, whether the consistency matters amongst the teachers and amongst the schools.
I hate to dishearten you. So I'll tell you a little exercise I did with my Algebra I team when I was at Edison High School, when I oversaw the math team. We took a real exam that a real student took, took the name off, took it to the CT, and had everybody grade it. Five members of the CT, grades ranged from a D-plus to an A-minus. And it was same test. So what happens is Alex gives you, you do 2 plus 2 is 5, and you're done. You know, zero credit for that. Me being the nicer guy, I do 2 plus 2 is 5. I say, "Okay, that's a half point off because your, your calculations were off." And then I follow the process. So the rest of the process, you got the rest of the process right. So I give partial credit for that. So those types of differences, I think, and if you, over the summer, Reeves is a great guy to read, he's very entertaining. And that was a joke. But I think we're never going to take the subjectivity completely out of grading, but I think what you're describing, though, and I think that is what we are striving for, and I do believe that a lot of schools and a lot of CTs already have that, where they do have some established rubrics. You know, what is, in an English class, it's really, really important, you know, what, what is a four, what's a three, what's a two, what's a one? And that's really where the real work of the CTs come. And I think that, we got, once we get that in the schools, I think, in each individual team, then it goes to schools, and then from school to school. I think the, the great part, the way, you know, the rest of this is where, I don't know that we would get there on that completely right away. But I do also think that this is a big step in the right direction because at least it's given us some stronger guidelines on where to go.
One last thing on that. More and more, our CTs are becoming more sophisticated about looking at student work and bringing examples of student work to the table. I think that helps us better calibrate how we're looking and thinking about grading or how we're reflecting upon students' work when we're sharing with our colleagues.
I'd also add the work that we did last year, and the recommendation was for collaborative teams to begin that conversation at the beginning of this year. For just a couple of the recommendations that had been made, we saw a lot of traction, a lot more consistency, at least within schools, within departments, within teams than we had previously.
Yeah, and I would just chime in. The reason that you see collaborative teams as the, as the main locus of control in so many of the recommendations because that's an area we know we can achieve greater consistency at the school level. So my colleague, Mr. Grimm, started off to say he was going to be discouraging, the encouraging piece that I would offer, and, you know, of the two visiting principals, only one of us was a successful athlete in the past, but that was Mr. Grimm. Our teams, our principals, we are very competitive with and against one another in some ways. So your question does speak to the fact that we are looking at that data, and that consistency is, is a goal. So I think the encouraging thing for me is we're working towards that with the team.
Thank you so much. I am glad that I've been able to do this with my whole hands tied up.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Next, we have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, so I've got a number of things. First of all, I'm going to channel kind of what I do a lot, which is students. Is there a students component to this? Did you guys like put together like, honestly, not the students that the principals would recommend, but a slice, an MRI slice of our student population to get some feedback?
We, we had the survey, but I will honestly say that the survey attracted students, did not attract a wide range of students. I can, if you give me a second, I can try and look for the demographics.
No, I'm just wondering if this couldn't continue to get better or continue to be more informed with even just some, like, sort of ad hoc student roundtables? And I know it wouldn't be scientific per se, but neither is a survey. And then you can almost, like, do a dipstick test on, on some of the schools and get some experience from, you know, an IB and an honors student and a, you know, advanced diploma student and a, you know, struggling, I mean, you know, a cross-section. Colleges. Dr. Garza, I know I've kind of championed that idea of a roundtable. I continue to do so because I'm wondering if there is a conversation here that is sort of a, you know, the synaptic gap that gets jumped on the other side is to the post-secondary institutions in terms of what they're looking for. And preparation of students for college-level work and is what we're doing as they age up in our system to 12th grade, preparing them for either a work environment or post-secondary. So I'm still very, very interested in that component.
Yes, we, in fact, it's on our project list. It's something that we've been wanting to do as well, the roundtable piece. Right now, we have no way of even assessing kind of what's working and what's not working because kind of everyone's doing their own thing. So I do think with these, knowing that it's, you know, we need to continue to work, there's some areas that have been identified, I think, for that continued work. Homework is another one that we want to continue to work on. So I, I think it's headed in the right direction, but we're just not done yet. But I think, you know, I think we can get some insight also from college and university submissions.
And, Mr. Grimm, I'm really, in particular, grateful for that discussion that you had about the process, analytics to a student's answer, because that's, I think, one of the big areas that I hear from students when I spend time talking to them, that they're very frustrated. They're frustrated from one teacher to the next in the same school, their peer group who's going to the neighboring school, that, you know, it's deemed as very unfair. And that's, you know, that's kind of a deeply embedded notion in, in our society is what's fair. And they're like, "Okay, well, wait a minute. I've shown the work here, and yes, I got the wrong answer, but I showed everything. I get not, I get no credit?" Or, I mean, there's a struggle with that. How do you deal, what, what is the approach going to be in, you think, grading with teachers who think that way? Because that's deeply embedded with them, too. And then also, teachers who are teaching maybe some of the upper-level courses where the notion somehow is more equals harder, that somehow if you give more work, it's a harder course.
So I, I think, let's start with the last first. That, I think that's something we have done a pretty good job on, especially in the last couple of years, of trying to talk about deeper, not harder, you know, or not more work. So I guess deeper would be harder, but you know what I mean? But not, not, not more quantities of work, larger quantities of work. You know, and I think, you know, the thing that's, that's difficult about schools to change is, as Dr. Garza said before, we've all been to school, and they're usually populated by a bunch of people who are very successful in the old model. And so that's one thing that we have to work, work through. I do think we've turned the corner on that quite a bit. So it's interesting you talk about process, though. I get as many complaints from, I shouldn't say kids, students about, "I got the answer right. Why do I have to show all my work?" And you'll get that, the opposite. And that's a struggle for some teachers, too. And so the conversation with those teachers goes along the lines of, "Well, do you think the student's cheating?" "No, I know the student's not cheating." Okay? If you don't think the student's cheating, is the student getting the answers wrong? "No, the student's getting all the answers right." "Okay, so why do they have to show their work?" "Well, I need to see how they're thinking." And so I think that's always going to be, I mean, it's always kind of one of those deals where I think that as we work with teachers and, and we try to, try to do what's best for kids, some kids, and it's what makes a job, that's the, that's the art of the, of the job, is being able for those teachers to differentiate and understand, for me, you're, you're going to have to work through the process because I will tell you, I'm sure that Alex was a much better student than I was. But, you know, so maybe you have to work through that process with me a little bit more, and where with Alex, maybe they're going to let Alex just answer the question. So I, I, I really think that that really is a difficult one, but I do think that as we continue to talk, and most, most, the CT has to be consistent. The CT, I mean, really has to be consistent. And that's where I think we can get much closer to fair, is if the CT is consistent.
All right, there's two kind of last points while I draw up your co-trophy for self-deprecation. One is, the other big problem seems to be consistently is the timing of work, and that somehow the model that we have in middle school of having teams sort of just dissolves in high school, and then everybody sort of becomes like a free-floating radical in terms of how they're approaching assigning work and assigning projects, and when, when things are coming due or quarter end. And there is a just, you can see, you can see in, you know, social media traffic, and I posit, although we've never looked at it, I would really like to see discipline incidences in terms of when they occur. I went and looked at the Virginia Department of Health recorded incidents this weekend because I had nothing better to do. And they actually report when incidents occur in the year by month and in the week by day. So you can see when, when things happen. And I, I posit that if we looked at it, we would see patterns, if we looked at it that way, that we would see patterns related to just before quarter end or just after quarter end, things that have to do with student health and mental, you know, mental health and wellness. So I'm wondering if there is going to be a way in, in this process of bringing like some syncope to the, the teachers who are teaching students and not, and if there's a way to correlate the workload that students are getting. And then the last thing would be students with IEPs and 504s. They are struggling, struggling, struggling still to have their accommodations acknowledged. Just, just last week, I was hearing from students whose teachers were making them feel like they didn't really have extra time that was provided. They're like, "Well, you came in late to your exam." I'm like, "Well, that's not what the extra time that's allotted for means." And in, in terms of where that stress is and where that grading is, you know, those can greatly alter students with special needs grades if there is not a fidelity to those underpinning, you know, 504 and IEP accommodations. And so I have a feeling that that may influence how grades are delivered. If one teacher is, you know, completely, you know, has great fidelity to it, and another teacher is like, "Ah, you know, you'll be fine."
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Strauss.
First of all, Dr. Lockard and Ms. Klemenko, along with everyone who participated in this task force, I have great respect for what you've all done and what you've brought for us today. I, I feel like you've captured a very significant piece of what we had hoped to do. And so, you know, Dr. Garza, hats off to you. So I, I want to preface that. I embrace everything you've laid out for us. In particular, I'm very thankful as a parent in, in listening to students. And Ms. Schultz and I are now like on our third year of having to go to Student Town Halls and talk to kids, and I'm going to reference it in a minute. But, I mean, all of the stuff you've looked at is really important, and in particular, on the test retake issue. And I wish Ms. Hines were here, and I'll catch her and reiterate this, because Mr. Lock, or Dr. Lockard said this so well. If my colleagues have not experienced this before, I have as a school board member. We have classes where none of the students are being successful in the assessments. And that is, can be an anomaly, but I know that our principals here at the building know it happens. And if you don't have a situation that says below an 80, we're going to allow at least one retake, you can actually have a calculus AB class where everyone's getting Cs and Ds, no one's getting Bs and As because it's a teacher mindset problem. But, so I know Ms. Hines was concerned about, are we sending the message of, you know, anything that's below an 80 isn't good enough? And I wanted to reassure her that I think it's not about the individual students when, as Dr. Lockard said, you have a vast majority of students that are not hitting that success. It's a warning sign. So the fact that you gave that flexibility, I think, is essential. And number two, the fact that you're giving the teachers the flexibility to decide how to do that retake of assessment. I've heard students who, and teachers say, "It is less time-intensive, less workload problems, and less stressful to do test corrections." And you put that in there, and I'm very thankful to see that language because it enables teachers to say, "When we have to redo and redesign and make another new test that is so stressful on all of us." So I'm going to continue to promote test corrections, I think, are the win-win. So those are all good. Here's my ask. We are very fortunate in this school system that we already have in our books, the FCPS Regulation 3205. And Ms. Klemenko and Dr. Lockard know this slide PowerPoint because, I mean, I'm sent it to all of you. One of my constituents has a law degree, and she worked on Capitol Hill and the Education Subcommittee for probably two decades. And she's been our homework guru here in Fairfax County. And she's been our homework guru here in Fairfax County. This Regulation 3205 has a Bullet Number Two and a Bullet Number Six. And what those two bullets say is, high school homework loads should not exceed two hours of homework a night. And the second one talks about rigor, that in advanced courses, it's not about volume of work, because you're taking a tougher class. It's the rigor of the work. And if we just, and this is my, my pleading of all pleadings, where you touched on homework on this, I'm begging, please, put those two, Number Two and Number Six in there as Bullet Number Two and Three. So you have one bullet that just says homework for practice and preparation is no more than 10%. If you just put those two others in as a bullet point, put those right there, you know, just front and center in the homework piece, because it's already something this county has in place. I believe that will enable our communities as a whole to start ha, starting to address the homework issue, and here's why. We did a survey by the FCC PTA in 2014 where 53% of the respondents said homework was a burden. Stanford did a 2014 study of 10 high-performing high schools and found that the average homework load was three hours of homework a night. The 2005 study that was done of 50 countries found that more homework undermines achievement. Ms. Schultz and I, in the schools that we surveyed, from the student respondents back, all five high schools, the students indicated, out of all of their total stressors, homework was the number one stressor, and by a long shot. Every single one of them, not only had homework as the number one stressor, it was between 50 to 66% of the respondents said homework was their number one stressor. These two regulations around the book is a start, Dr. Garza, and if you, if you could put that in there, it'll enable us with the regional superintendents, the principals, and our families to have a shared dialogue on it. And so I'm going to give you one last visual, because we keep hearing that homework is complex. I'd like to say, maybe we can look at it in a simplified visual. If you look at the fact that high schools on a block schedule, they take four classes a day. Two of them are typically in elective. We're just going to go with that, right? So maybe each day, you're going to have, three out of your four classes are a core academic subject. Well, if you do the pie chart here, three core subjects, they're taught at 90 minutes apiece. For 90 minutes of instruction, you're going to have 45 minutes of review to, to go home and do. Or maybe you're going to start doing your paper, or you're going to study for your test. But you've got 45 minutes that you can then assign for each of those three classes, you're at two hours and 15 minutes of homework. And yet, most of our students are telling us that they're well exceeding over three hours. And my final note that I shared with all of you is, we currently give direction to teachers, we'd like to see one to two assessments per week. What that's translating to, and I showed at one of our recent school board meetings, is an AP course, which is a college-level class, we are having classes where it's not two assessments a week, it's three assessments a week. So in nine weeks, those students have 26 assessments. If you extrapolate that to a semester, at the, you know, which a college is 18, 15, 18 weeks, that would mean that those students would have 52 assessments. I know college wasn't that far back for any of us. I guarantee you, not a single college professor gives 52 assessments in a semester. And in that particular class I showed you, it was 14 tests and quizzes. No college course gives you 28 tests and quizzes in one semester. So that's just a way for us to really help have a meaningful conversation that, especially for our honors and APIB courses where we are hearing it the most, volume, volume, volume is, is what is draining these kids to the point that they are so stressed out. And it's a national problem, but, again, Dr. Garza, I hope our next step, when we wrap up this session, is that my colleagues, with your support, will just say, can we add those two bullets under the homework section here? Put those two parts of the regulation in on homework. I believe it allows to have then a really meaningful dialogue. And Mr. Moon, to your question, I thought it was excellent about our honors graduates and how you can see them vary, high school to high school. Two points. Number one, back when Fair Grade lobbied for the grading policy changes, and grateful they were put in, Fair Grade also did say, when you change your grading scale and your weights, understandably, how you would define an honors graduate of a, of a weighted 4.0 and above would obviously change. And in some schools, we saw two, three, four times the number of kids who, you know, 25 had been an honors graduate. Now we can sometimes see 100 kids as honors graduates. Maybe that's the conversation to have with Dr. Garza, the LT, the school board. I mean, I, I think that the main thing is that we need to recognize, we never changed that, that threshold. You know, so I believe our GPAs, I've studied it actually, I've looked at it, since post-Fair Grade, our weighted and our unweighted GPAs are more reflective of the norm around the country of high-performing schools. So we've done a good job with that. But our honors graduate recognitions, principals, leadership team, you may want to look at that and say, are we, we didn't, we never changed that. Number two, Mr. Moon, you brought up about grading consistency among high schools, you know, seeing GPA breakouts, and also within high schools among same-subject, different teachers. I've also been working with one of my high schools where the families brought that to my attention. The regional superintendent has been tremendous. It turns out, some high schools are already doing it. They are already, with their collaborative learning teams, with their assistant principals, they're monitoring that quarter by quarter, semester by semester, year by year. Others, there, it's not happening at all. And normative grading distributions are essential. You don't want to see an AP course where everyone's getting Cs, Ds, and below. Those are your highest performers. It is highly unlikely they're doing that level of work, but we've had that happen before. And on the other hand, you don't want to see everybody's getting As in an AP class, and they're all getting twos and below on their AP exams. So there's things we, we can do. It's happening in some of our schools. Again, many of my colleagues, in fact, Ms. Hines, I wish she was here, because three years ago, she and I attended something that Mr. McElveen did at Woodson High School with the county student leaders. And they told us three years ago, if nothing more, please do something on the homework loads. So I'm excited that through all this dialogue, finding out that so much of the framework is there in our current regulation, and you all doing this work, it really is going to enable us as a vehicle to start having that conversation. I think we can start finding solutions. But I just will close with this. Everything I told you in the Stanford study, this is not Meghan McLaughlin's opinion. It is the brain research. It is the, the academic work around homework of what we know, what helps students be successful and what doesn't. And our students are telling us in, in very significant ways, we've got to get a handle on homework, and I do think our regulations are going to help us get there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Hoff.
I just have a quick one. I know that you've, first of all, this is great, and I have to compliment, I know this was very tough-going, very tough-going. But I'm glad you've undertaken it, and you've been very patient. You've acknowledged that some of the high schools that already have a no zeros policy, they will continue with that. What do you see over time with how you think that one is going to fall, how that's going to be handled?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I'm, I'm going to say that, whereas the, the focus group felt very comfortable with where we landed, the threshold to move to a complete no-zero policy was, was very large. And we still had a lot of, a lot of teachers very concerned about that. And in the parent input, there was also a lot of concern around that. So I wouldn't say, well, we're just a hop, skip, and a jump away, and we're going to have to see how this, this implementation goes, and, and start, and, and restart the dialogue and see what the next, the next iteration is.
Because I'm hearing things on both sides of that issue.
Right. In places where they, they have established that, the principals have shared that took years to get to that no-zero environment. So I don't think, as Noel said, that's something that's going to be an overnight that we can predict.
I think where we really want to be is we want students doing the work. We don't want to give zeros because they've done the work, right? So if we can set up systems in schools where students are held accountable to do the work to the greatest extent possible, that's going to be our best, our best approach.
Right. Well, I just, I have to compliment you all on trying to find the reasonableness factor in all of these decisions. I know how hard that is. But I think you've struck, so far, a good balance, at least what I would see, as being a reasonable way to, to make things a little more consistent, because I agree, once a grade book opens up, then, you know, we live in this age of big data, and now the data's out there, so we need, we need, we need to have some consistency.
I, I would just say, I've been on a lot of different committees, and this one really used a lot of very intentional methodologies to involve stakeholder voice. And so very constant in our thinking was, not only what are we hearing from students, but what is reasonable for our employees as teachers? And those considerations, I, I think we're in the right level of harmony and balance. And there's lots of change associated with that. When you talk about something like a zero policy, we're happy to put our energy and effort into the change management process for late work. Because if kids are engaged in what they're learning, and we're getting the work in, we're having the greatest outcomes for student achievement.
Great. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have Ms. Hoff, then Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. I, I fear my questions are a little bit in the weeds, only because I've received them from some constituents as they saw this posted. So I just thought I would bring them up. One of them is, in terms of homework, science projects, longer-term projects can be considered homework. Are they going to be held to that 10% or less? Or is that a different category?
So if you take a look, sorry, wrong way. For homework, we made very specific, let me get the right wording here, for practice or preparation. So those would not count.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I just add one more thing? I think that's also the pool, when we look about homework and the amount of homework, how does reading count? You know, if you're reading for preparation for a class, you know, some people will call that preparation, some people will call it homework. So I think that's another battle. So I think when it happens is if it gets graded, if there's a quiz or something like that, then it kind of becomes homework. If it's not graded, like in a college-level class, you know, you, you were expected to read, and you got a midterm. If the teacher sounded like that, I don't know that the teachers consider that homework.
The other one is a clarification for myself. If a student is a, an opportunity for a student to retake a test if they got above an 80% at the discretion of the collaborative team, their highest score still would be an 80%, so they'd really only be taking it for their own edification?
No, if, if the teacher or the team opens it up to anyone, then their highest score goes in. So that, that 80 cap is only if it's open to students who score below an 80.
So once they were open to one student who got over an 80, it'd be open to all students who got over an 80? Okay. And then another thing is, I heard Dr. Garza say that parents have, you know, that's one of the number-one things that they stop you for. Is there going to be an opportunity for parents to give their input on this process? I know that you guys have done an excellent job with getting so many teachers from all the middle and high schools, but I will say, there are a lot of parents that are emailing me saying, what about this? And, you know, they had, they have opinions. I think I, we got an email today about it. This procedures are byproducts of uninspiring and ineffective teaching, you know, that, letting, allowing retakes. So is there going to be an opportunity, right or wrong, for parents to?
So we've done the outreach through the website and through the user voice collection, which I will wholeheartedly admit is not extensive. I think a lot of the weight will start to fall on the schools through back-to-school nights, as, as parents come to schools for, for those meetings and are hearing how the grading is working in those classrooms. So I think a lot of education will come there. We'll continue to populate the website with education pieces. We don't have general meetings planned at this time.
And, and I think we have to, and I, I agree with you, Noel, I think our principals, we have to rely upon our principals a lot to help educate our parents about it. But at the same time, I think we also have to recognize that there are times when, you know, we as leaders in the system have a, maybe for, to large extent, a greater understanding of what the research literature talks about as best practice in the area of grading. And we can't expect our parents to always have access to that level of information. Even, even with our great principals helping educate our parents, we're still going to have gaps in differences around understandings, you know. And I'll tell you, and I think the other thing we would tell parents is, we're not making these decisions in a vacuum. They're backed up with a lot of research and a lot of study. And in fact, the materials that were given to the teachers over this 18-month period was pretty extensive. So, you know, I would say, you know, if a parent were asking me about it, I would say, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time studying this issue, and we've really looked at the research literature. We know that this is best for students. And you, you know, to some extent, they have to trust us that this is the right thing. And the other thing I would say too is, many forward-thinking school systems have had these kinds of policies and practices in place for some time. There are some surrounding jurisdictions that are also having these conversations right now. So I can't remember some of those. Stevie Met can help me, but there's been a number of articles in the Washington Post where others are also looking at these same kinds of things. So we, we're not by ourselves in doing this. You know, this is reflection of, of what we know is working in other school systems.
Cute. To that point, I heard people talking about it, waiting for the bus this weekend. So they're talking about it in the area. We have, have Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax, and Ms. Evans, before I go to go, go backs.
Thank you. This is a great piece of work. It's a piece of work that has probably been five years in the making. It's something that this conversation about grading policy, zeros, goes back at least in the Mount Vernon area to Alex's precursor at the, the principal at West Potomac. And so there's been a lot of discussion about it in that community because of the work that was done early. I will also echo Dr. Garza's comments on that we have two of the best principals in the system sitting up here and who have been part of it, and I'm just proud to say that they also serve our Mount Vernon students. And I, I was skeptic when this policy first started being discussed several years ago. And I was a skeptic because, you know, after all, I had been a student in Fairfax County, so therefore I was an expert. And so I spent a lot of time and spoke to a lot of people, and I really think that this addresses a concern I had early on when we created open access to our advanced programs and our honors programs, that if we were going to create open access, that we needed to ensure we had programs in place to allow every child to master the subject and not get turned off or flee from advanced academics because of having to learn a new way and having a different level of rigor. And so I very much welcome what you all are doing here. I also think that the deliberate manner in which you all have done this, by addressing things such as the 80% threshold, solves another concern that many of us have had with this policy as it has evolved, which is that you don't want kids gaming the system. And by putting an 80% threshold, you take away the incentive for kids to say, well, you know, I can always retake this. And so therefore, it doesn't really matter how I do it the first time. And so it does create that very, that balance there. And so I think that's great. The, a couple of comments I do have, which are, one on, once a kid takes a test, one of the things that we don't have consistently across the county is whether or not a child actually gets to see the test that they took, so that they can use the results for remediation and understand why they may not have done as well as they wanted to. And so I would love to hear your comments on that. The second thing is how this policy applies to tests and assignments that are issued at the end of a quarter. So you might be right at that grading handoff. And whether or not, and that especially applies, I or not, and that especially applies, I think, at the high school and middle school where they may actually close their grade books before the last day of the quarter. And then, the last thing is to just comment that we've had a lot of discussion about homework policy. I would welcome taking that discussion to a separate session rather than mixing it in with our grading discussion fully. I mean, I understand the need to, for regulations. No, no, I understand it touches on it from a grade point of perspective. But what I'm talking about is how we actually address homework policy, you know, how much homework, things like that. And so, if we can have at some point in the future, kind of a discussion about homework policy as a whole, of what is appropriate for homework versus in-class work. And, because I know we have a lot of discussion in the community as to whether or not we have enough homework, whether we have too much homework. And so, I think it would actually be a public service to our community to have that discussion. Not, not about how it's graded, but more. Okay, it doesn't preclude it. That's not the point. Okay. And so, if you all can just address my comments there.
So as far as seeing the tests and, and handing it back, we do not have any division policy, yes or no, around that. So I do think that what I have heard is that there's some test security because people want to use it over and over. But I can't, I can't imagine that students aren't actually getting a chance to, to see their work and get the feedback on it. So I'm going to turn it over to the principals. Maybe they have a more reality base on that.
Yeah, that's an active conversation with collaborative teams. They take great pride in developing assessments. You sometimes have teacher teams that are using released assessments from College Board or IB. And there are some security requirements around that. But obviously, if, if you're assessing a, a student, they need some information about how they did on the assessment to continue their, their learning. So anytime there would be a, a restriction or policy, I think the reasonable expectation is that there's some form of feedback and, and time to reflect on it.
I think it's a very good answer, Alex. I'd make a note of that, Noel. We might need to put some kind of standard in place. You know, certainly if it's an assessment that we do not own, that's owned by somebody else, we can't control that. But if it's something that's within our control, I think we need to, you know, we need to require that that'll be provided to students. Because I don't know that you can effectively assess your own individual work without having access to the test. I think it's only, only reasonable. So I think we need some, probably some feedback on that. So maybe you haven't thought of something that maybe is a nuance. But I think that's legitimate.
I do think if you're going to take a retake, you need to know what you missed so that you can improve before you take the second one. So it's sort of implied, but perhaps we need to be more intentional about that. Yes.
And I think, too, some clarification on, because that's a struggle. And I, it is a struggle. And I, and I agree wholeheartedly with the struggle. And I think being able to see it and at some point at least be able to get that feedback and be able to reasonably prepare. I think some of the teachers, and it, and it does typically tend to be an AP/IB issue, not always, but it does. I think the concern is actually sending it home with them and then they keeping it. I think that's a little bit different. But, but I, I agree. I, I do struggle with it, too, because it's very difficult to remediate and get better at something if you don't know exactly what you did wrong.
Good. Well, in the interest of time, we have a couple more speakers and then one very, very brief go-back. So Ms. Darnett Kofax. Oh, sorry.
Mike, retaking at the end of a quarter and whether or not, how that applies wasn't answered.
So we're going to have to take a look at that because we, honestly, that never came up. I'm kind of surprised that we didn't take it that far. I think there are some options, depending on how that plays out in an individual class, how close, how close there is. There's always the option of grade changes. There's always the option of incompletes. There's always, I mean, there are some options in order to not have, not to eliminate that retake opportunity. I think this might perhaps change the timeline that teachers work on, knowing that they want to provide that opportunity. So that will be something that will have to be considered in sort of moving forward.
And I would emphasize as a principal, that syllabus that we talked about, and I think it speaks to the final exam question, we do need to begin with the end of the mind, end in mind of our course and know where we're headed as a result of this learning. And so, we, we take that contract as a, as, as such, as a contract between the school and the, and the families to give some direction on where a course is going. So when we get asked as principals to review and make sure teams have thought through those conversations, we take that seriously.
Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Lockard and Ms. McCo for presenting this. I think we have, as you said, we've spent a lot of time on it. And I think we've made some significant, significant progress. So thank you. Mr. Grimm and Mr. Case, thank you both for being here. And thank you for being honest. I appreciate that very much. I think your acknowledgement of that while we are definitely getting better at being more consistent, there may be already more than 50 shades of gray in, in, in grading sometimes. So it is, but it was, well, just shades of gray. Let's put it that way. Let's take out the 50. There may be many shades of gray. Sorry, I didn't think about that. But anyway, I do have a question on page eight about late work. And so, it said, and, and how far you went down that road. Many, it says here, many teams, teacher teams must set reasonable guidelines for turning in late work to encourage work completion by their students. So that one, I think, can be problematic if it's, if it's, again, we're, we're talking about a reflection of learning where sometimes is late work, if an A work is A work, or if A work is turned in one day late, it's minus grade, a letter grade. If A work is turned in two days late, it's minus two letter grades. So how was that addressed? Because that is significant when you get to AP and IB and the upper grades. And teachers are very inconsistent on that from what I've seen.
So if there was one thing we spent the most time going back and forth on and were unsuccessful with, it was coming up with a consensus recommendation from the focus group around the penalty. Many people thought no penalty, because that's a work habit versus achievement. And many people thought we needed up to 50% penalty, and then you had everything in between. So we could not come to a consensus. So these would be the types of things that the recommendations and, that will build into the best practices document. So it won't be in regulation, but we'll start to encourage teams to have these conversations and, and move in that direction.
Yeah, this, this, this one is kind of a pet peeve for me. So, because one of the things that sometimes we hear, especially on the accepting of the late work, you know, we have to prepare our kids for the real world. And I, I got this at a conference. I can't take credit for this. But the keynote speaker said, "Really, what does the IRS do when you're late?" Do they say, "I'm not going to take your check on the 16th of April." No, you get penalties and you still have to pay and you have all of that. And so, I think we prepare kids for the real world by taking late work and holding them. How many kids do a little dance when they can go tell mom and dad, "I could do it, mom, but they're not going to take it?" And, and so that's the issue. And at the same time, we also don't want to create a, a situation where students start managing their case, their, their workload by just, "I'm not going to do this yet, but I'm going to do this now." And so, I think, I, I don't know that there's a precise answer for it, but I do think that what we do need to do is start having conversations around, when a student does a reasonable amount of work, what does that look like versus a student who's just clearly blowing it off? And, and that's, that's where your shades of gray come in. And sometimes that is where Alex and I end up getting into the conversation, because it goes to the CT and it goes to the department chair and it goes to the assistant principal. But I, I think we just need to continue to work on, on, on getting effort out and getting it done on time. But I do think we need to take late work because we do teach kids the wrong lesson.
Right. And, and I agree. And, and I appreciate your analogy there. But I, I do think if the overall process is a reflection of learning, and there is a disincentive. And even, you know, when you talk about the high school level and the block schedule, you know, it, it's, well, I, I don't need, need to be laborious. I think we're all on the same page here. I think we don't have an answer. But I definitely think there is room for continued talk here because it's quite impactful in the high, at the high school level on, on kids and grades. And, and also, you, you talk about disincentive in some ways. You know, if, say they forget it and, and then immediately it's 50%, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different things. And, and I get that. And so, sorry that, that, that wasn't, I'm, I'm sorry to hear, I guess, that, that, that we didn't come to a consensus on that. But I certainly understand that. I think we should work on it.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Thank you for your work on this. This was excellent work. And I only have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Certainly, this is all about, really about learning. You know, it's not about grading. You know, we always need to keep that in sight, that that's really what, what this is all about. On the zeros, I think you've come up with, at least for the time being, a pretty good compromise here. I know it took me a while to, to accept this idea of, of the no zeros or almost no zeros. And it, what it took for me was to, aside from the mathematical problems with, with having a, a zero on the, in the grade book, is, right, it's on a hundred-point scale. And really, what we're doing is, we're changing the scale. We're basically, for the most part, rather than zero to 100, we've now got 50 to 100. And when I started thinking about it that way, it kind of changed my, my view of it. So I, I point, you know, just make that point for what it's worth. On the issue, I think Ms. McLaughlin brought this up about the, the AP and IB grades versus test scores. We got a report not too long ago that showed the correlation between the grades and the test scores. And I, I was pleased to see that there was, generally speaking, a, a good correlation. The high grades led to, you know, the high test scores. You know, the lower ones led to the, the lower test scores. And I think that's the way it should be. There were some cases where it was not consistent. And it seems to me that since it's not an across-the-board thing, that this is something probably to be addressed at the school level. So I guess this is my question for the principals, whether this is something that you look at. Are you, you know, are you aware of teachers who maybe, you know, it's easier A, you know, again, going back to Mr. Moon's point, an easier A, but then, you know, poor AP grades or poor IB grades? Are, do you watch for that? Is there any way to have, to guard against that? You know, presumably, if a student's getting an A, they should be doing well on the?
Yes, we do get information. Yes, we react. And in fact, some of Noel's team in structural services is enhancing the, the speed and the quality of the data tools that principals are given to, to make actionable decisions.
So you would also look at, if, if you felt that a specific teacher was perhaps grading too easily or not, not teaching the material as rigorously?
The, the power of the collaborative team is, you know, we can bring data like that to usually even in an AP course, we have multiple people teaching a subject. So always want to empower our teachers to read, reflect, react to data before any knee-jerk reaction by a principal. But the data conversations are indeed happening.
Mr. Grimm, I think you were going to add.
Yeah. So, and just to be clear, I actually believe in giving the students credit for the late work. I just wish I could give them more work. That's the, what I wish we could do for them, to incentivize them for turning it in. Not more work necessarily, but more time with the teacher, because I think that really helps. So I'm, I'm sorry, I want to go back to that last comment. Because I, I really do feel like that's important to get that work in. We also see that report for our SOL courses as well.
All right.
So there is a correlation between your SOL courses and your grade distribution. And so, we do look at those pretty intensely, because what we want to make sure is that the rigor is balanced with the, with the grade and, and the SOL or the AP test. And, but now, I'm going to put a caveat on that a little bit. I also have had some really good teachers who have good grade distributions and their scores maybe aren't as high as we would want them to be. But if I go back and I go back and look at this, you know, those students, and I look at where they start and where they come from, they do some fantastic jobs of stretching kids. And so, that's the one piece sometimes you got to be a little bit careful of is, you know, is as we expand our pool and we try to get more and more students in, our scores may not bump. But if we take a kid who probably was walking in that class and maybe was a one or two and gets two or three, or gets two or two, then that also, so it's, it's, it's a delicate conversation because we, we want to hold our teachers and our students to high rigor. And we also want to be very welcoming. We don't want to be in a situation where the teacher says, "Look to your left, look to your right. One of you, one of you is not going to be here at the end of the semester." And, and if we get too much into the score, sometimes that creates a little bit of that. So it's, it's a delicate balance. But we absolutely, and I go back to Alex's idea, when the CT owns, when those four teachers own that data and they own all of those students' data, that's when it gets very, very powerful. And that's where the power of that CT comes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good to, that's good to know. And I guess my last comment would be, and this is a, a little bit outside of what we're discussing today, but I want to make the point that it's also going to be important to make sure that what we're teaching at every school is also consistent. That, you know, the rigor at one school is the same as the rigor at all of our schools.
Thank you. I will comment briefly before we go back to our go-back. Really do want to commend you. I know we sat together in preparation for this. And I think as a, one of my bosses at a summer school said, "There's many ways to teach a child as there are people in the world." So I think you, it was a long process, but very mindful. You really did bring in the stakeholders very actively, proactively, but also thoughtfully and strategically. I know this is very, very tough work. People have been waiting to hear this. And I think you've done a good job of seeing how far you could go and leaving, leading the road for the future. So thank you very much. And my only question was, I know we've talked about giving back, being able to see tests at the elementary school level. I've been hearing quite a bit from, you know, some parents about being able to see more of the classwork coming home. So I know we're, we're really focusing on high school, but I don't know if we want to look as well into elementary school, middle school, and what work goes home, what, what families, kids are able to look at in their learning. Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Okay, so it says short, and I am, I do mean short. The reading, whether reading is homework, that becomes a critical factor. And when Ms. McLaughlin said, "Hey, you got a 90-minute class, and if three of those classes are core classes and they go home and do 45 minutes, you're already at 2 hours and 15 minutes," that 45 minutes includes reading. And so, I'm worried that if we don't say that reading is homework, that, this is what the students are saying, that they don't have time to absorb information, that they're always just, and, and I likened it in one of my student ten-halls to hurdles on a track. And we've just compressed the hurdles to every five yards. And so, if they're just having to clear the hurdles, there's no time to learn the technique of clearing the hurdles well. And just two other quick things. I'm sorry, I lied. The, if you don't get to see an exam before you retake it, you don't know what you've gotten wrong and they just recommit the same mistakes. That's a very frustrating thing for students. And then just final, like, a driver's exam, you know, if, if you fail a driver's exam and you go back and you start with a 50, or you start with a 70, and that's the best grade you can get and it can only go down from there, the likelihood that they're going to do well, like if that's the maximum grade? So I, I agree. I mean, Dr. Garza, I'm sure you extend deadlines all the time if staff doesn't have a report, or they need more information, or, I mean, that, that is real life. So I, I think, I, I, yeah, college professors do it. I, I think it is a reality that, look, you, you get one shot at this and if not, you never ever get to get it right again. Or you don't ever get the chance to, to get full credit. So, sorry.
So we, as we look at, yes.
I just have, I would like clarity on the, the reading. Is it part, how, how is in the part of this conversation, reading is part of that two hour? And I want, I too want to separate the homework. But, but in this conversation, was reading, was the reading considered part of that?
So this particular conversation in this focus group, we were not tackling homework at all.
At all.
Except for the component of what's the maximum it could count in your grade book. That was the only component.
Okay. All right. So this is a separate conversation then.
What Ms. McLaughlin suggested is just making a connection for people in that document.
But the definition, in my view, implies that, I mean, if it's preparation for class, that, that reading would be included. And I think what, what Martin was talking about is, that does tend to be a lot of times with some of the challenges that we have, in particular with AP. And I'm getting feedback.
IB.
AP and IB is the volume of information that they're expecting. AP and IB is the volume of information that they're expected to read. And so that is something we're gonna have to, to kind of address moving forward. Thank you.
So next step, does this look okay? Anyone's missing? We have, I won't, I won't try to read the first one. So item, uh-huh?
Refers to our, our homework regulation. And it was suggested that we would take two pieces of that and connect it to our grading and reporting handbook when we're talking about homework in there, just to, to kind of emphasize that and have it all in one place.
Okay, perfect. And the second one, providing information, how retakes at end of quarter grading period are addressed. Any, does that fulfill everyone's? Yes?
Weren't we gonna have a consistency on how, um, how test and graded assignments are provided back to students for remediation?
Uh, recommend?
I think you said we were gonna add language to the grading and reporting to ensuring students could see the assessments after taking it? Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good.
Are we putting that on there?
Can we add that? So language around returning, seeing tests before retake? Or just reviewing materials that we own, that we have rights to? Reviewing?
We know what that means, so y'all can leave it like that.
Before retake, perfect.
Okay. And I'll just, just to wrap this up, I just wanna thank our two principals, uh, that, uh, came today. Uh, Martin, Martin Grim and, and Alex Case, we thank you so much. Uh, and just for the record, I actually didn't say that you're the best principals in the division. Cause I'm gonna be, cause I'd be in trouble if I said that. Karen said that. I said you were two of the best principals in the United States. Right, right?
Make sure Mr. Dave sees that from my.
And, and, and thank you, Noel and Steve, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you. We have a brief, brief two-minute break. Janie and Dahlia, will you go ahead and run the next one? Even, okay, thanks. When, when we're ready, but.